And the results of those bids.
Excuse me, gentlemen. Welcome.
Thanks, Jim. Dr. Kaczmarek, Ford. It's great to be here tonight. We have, you've probably heard a little bit of the great news already. So we had the bond sale a couple of weeks ago. And if you remember, at the time of preauthorization of the bond issue, we set a sale day that was not a regular board meeting day and authorized the board, a board official and the superintendent or director of business to accept the bid, a little bid if it met the parameters outlined in the resolution authorizing the sale. And indeed, it did. And we got great results. So we're here tonight to walk through the results of the process and to have the board then ratify the action that accepted the low bid on February 13th. With me is Ryan Miles. He's on our team and works on the investment side. So he'll be taking care of all proceeds. I'm going to say hi. Or would you want to add?
Hi. We could talk about that after we talk about the sale a little bit, too.
Sure. So you have a sale day report in front of you. And I wasn't sure if I'd be at the podium, but I did do my orange and black white for your lake.
Is this in the board packet?
If you can see my socks under the table.
Yes.
I do also have orange socks on. So I'm committed to this on the bond sale.
You can give us one second. Let us all catch up to where it is in the board packet. I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. And I love the orange, the socks. Go Bears. Okay.
All right. So we have a couple of points of reference as we think about the bond sale. One is what we talked about with the voters during the election. And that obviously focused on the big picture of $326 million. But if you remember, there's a multi-stage plan that went along with that. And the goal is to meet a certain tax impact, spread the bonds over the next five or six years, issuing the $326 million of voter-approved bonds, also including $100 million of non-voter-approved facilities maintenance projects for the deferred maintenance component of the big project. Once that passed, Shelby McCoy was here at your meeting last month and talked through our pre-sale estimates. And at that time, we were giving you a heads up that market rates had gone down and interest rates. And our goal was obviously, the first goal was to hit that tax impact target. You'd already set the levy in December. So we obviously knew we had to be right there with the results. But because of interest rates being lower, we changed the structure. And this actually, for you and your taxpayers, turned out to be a really solid plan that adds even more protection over the long term than what we envisioned would be possible, given what the interest rate environment was last summer when we started building the plan. So when Shelby was here at the pre-sale report, just as a reminder, we had increased the first bond issue from what we talked about during the election of about $200 million to $250 million, and then extended the term of that first bond issue through the end, rather than having two shorter bond issues or multiple shorter bond issues, to have one longer bond issue at the beginning because the interest rate environment was so favorable. And what that does for you, typically when interest rates change, they affect longer bonds more than shorter bonds, like a 30-year versus a 15-year mortgage. Those rates are going to swing more with the longer ones. By selling some of those long bonds right now, we've locked those interest rates in and basically built a hedge for you in case rates do come up. Then we'll have protected the taxpayer from experiencing that on those long years of the bond. So we'll look at the plan in detail. But it actually really worked out favorably for you and your taxpayers. So if you go to the first page of the report, again, we sold $250 million of bonds on the 13th of February for the purposes authorized by the voters. The second section in there is the rating. And there's a rating report attached, and we'll get into that a little bit. The S&amp;P Global Ratings had previously had the district rated at AA. The scale is plus and then minus, so double A plus, double A, double A minus. The district was double A for many years. With the addition of the debt that this bond issue includes, as well as some general fund pressure that you've had, they changed that rating to double A minus. And we can go again into a little, a little bit more into the details. You know, we always kind of struggle to associate what a rating change does to an interest rate. But because interest rates are so phenomenally low right now, it's hard to even see that there was much of an impact on the bidding. You still had a lot of bidders and you still got a great interest rate. The other thing is you do have that credit-enhanced rating of AAA that goes along with the sale. And so that helps out in the market when folks are looking at whether they want to bid on your bonds or not. So, but let's get a little bit more into the details of the rating when we get to that attachment. So as I did mention, you did get several, a lot of bids, seven bids. The low bidder was Citigroup Global Markets out of New York. And if you remember during the election, we talked about 3.95% interest rate for these bonds. And during the pre-sale, we lowered that to 3.27%. The low bid from Citigroup was right around 2.4%. So that, that is actually, that's a great interest rate. And I mentioned to Dr. Kaczmarek after, after the sale that, and you'll see it in the chart later, we, I did a 50-year history of interest rates. And you sold your bonds on February 13th. February 14th was the lowest interest rate on that, on that graph in 50 years. And so he took the credit for timing the bond sale for the 13th, so we'll give him that.
It turns out we should have waited one more week.
Yeah, probably. You never know. The rates have come down a little bit, but we'll say it. So it's still a great rate. So that's a good thing. The italicized note, just want to point out that the underwriter paid a premium. If you remember, that's where someone pays you more for your bonds than you're selling them for. So they offered a premium for the bonds that was higher than we projected. That kind of gets determined as the bids are taken. So at that $250 million amount, we actually deposited $3.5 million more than we had planned in the pre-sale into your construction fund.
Why would a buyer do that?
Right now, it sometimes has to do with kind of projections of where they think interest rates are going to go in the future. But from a, from a, from a bank standpoint, they will often pay a premium because then they can charge what's called a coupon rate, which each principal payment, unlike a mortgage, each principal payment has its own interest rate. And that's called the coupon rate. And if they give you a premium, they're in effect prepaying some of your interest and they charge you a higher coupon rate. So when we look at the bids, and I'll kind of point it out there, you'll see maybe a 4% coupon on one of the payments. And you'll say, well, you just told us the interest rate was 2.4%. And that's because they're sort of giving you money in the premium to offset some of the higher interest. And then if they go to resell the bond, it's more attractive because it has a higher interest rate. So they're thinking about the secondary market. You only care about the true interest cost, which is the net impact of the interest after you account for the premium. So for you, if it's four, 2% with no premium or 4% with a lot of premium, that's, either one is okay from, from your standpoint as an issuer. But there are some market reasons why a bank might pay you more than you're selling them for. And we are restricted. We can't just take all the premium and put it in the construction fund because the voters authorized a certain amount. So ultimately, when we're done issuing $326 million of bonds, you'll probably only issue something like maybe 310 or 315 million bonds because we'll use some of that premium to offset the additional bonds because you just can't issue more than the voters said you could. And so we'll use it in that way. So then you end up borrowing less, too. So those coupon rates are a little higher, but you borrow less. And the true interest cost come, is really the measure of what's the interest after you take into account the premium. Okay? And then the other note at the bottom of that page is we just did a comparison. And I think the last line is pretty telling. So the levies for the, for these bonds, along with what we're projecting for 2022 and 2024, which will be the two other issues related to the voter-approved portion, we're estimating that total levies for paying off your bonds will be about $82 million less than we talked to the voters about during the, during the election. So it's the same in tax impact, but you'll notice over time, we've basically built in some step downs in your future debt service. And so the combination of that and, and as a result of the low interest rates means that over the 25 years that these bonds are outstanding, your taxpayers will pay significantly less than what was projected during the election. So that's the other, that's the monetary part of the, the good news.
Questions? Can we kind of have you hold it just a minute? I want to make sure there's no questions from any of the board members so far. Any questions? Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. So let's look at the attachments then. And we'll try, try to skim through them and hit the high points. The first attachment on page one and two is the actual bid tabulation for the bonds. And you can see on page one that Citigroup Global Markets is the, was the lowest bidder. There's a group of other banks listed there that's called a syndicate. And it's not like The Sopranos kind of a syndicate. It's a, it's a group of banks that, obviously, this was a large offering. So they're partnering with other banks to purchase, to purchase the bonds. And they're, they're all listed there. If you look on the rate and yield columns, that's what I was referencing in regard to the premium. So in 2021, the first payment that you're making, the rate, so the coupon rate is 4%. So you're paying 4% against that principal payment. The re-offering yield kind of mimics the, the actual interest cost to the district, and that's 0.88%. And so that's kind of how that premium comes into play for you and what the, what the result is in terms of the tax or the interest rate that you effectively have paid. Okay? The other bids, really with this size of an issue, it's no surprise. They're, they're kind of the major players that, that we think of in finance, Bank of America, Mezro Financial from Chicago, Wells Fargo, Morgan Stanley, JP Morgan, Bank of New York Mellon and from Pittsburgh. So, so there was a lot of interest in the bonds, which also reassures us that it's a great interest rate because there was a lot of competition for the, for the issue. And you can see that even, even the, the second bid was less than a tenth of a percent off the winning bid. And even the highest, or a hundredth of a percent, and even the highest bid was about a tenth of a percent off of the winning bid. So there were, it was a very, very tight bidding environment. So it speaks to the, to the market and to the, to the fact that this is a, a good issue that people wanted to bid on. Page three is sources and uses. And this, this gets to how many bonds or how much in bonds are you going to issue? And how much is that going to generate for, for school district projects? The first column is what we talked about during the election. $326 million of bonds, $326 million of funds available for project costs. And that incorporates about 3.2 million of estimated investment earnings. So you want to not put the $250 million in a sock drawer until you spend it. You want to invest that because you can spend those investment earnings on, on construction projects. And so Ryan's specialty is getting it out of the sock drawer and making you as much money as you can while you hold those funds. So that's, if you look at that next line, we're currently estimating under the 2020A issue, that on this issue alone, that you'll earn somewhere in the neighborhood of $6.5 million. So that alone is about $3 million more for project expenses than what we had projected during, during the election. I don't know if you want to comment a little bit about today's market. You probably saw the stock market today, and that'll come into play.
Right. It's an interesting day to be an investment advisor and see the stock market drop 1,000 points today and then come and talk about investments with the, with the district. But we're really here to say that as a, as our, our plan is we can buy fixed income investments according to state statute, and those investments are very safe. They're very secure, and they're not going to fluctuate like the stock market is. So that's, that's the bond market is where as you're selling bonds, we're also able to buy bonds in the portfolio for the district to really match the construction schedule along the way.
Ryan, we got one computer online.
Are we restricted as a school district from what we can invest in?
Correct, yes. Yep. You, state statute, 118A restricts the global aspect of what all districts could invest in. And then you also have an investment policy that, that realistically mimics what the state statute is, but it really is very restrictive what you can, can and cannot do.
Is there, what is an overlying overarching what the restriction is?
Yeah. So you cannot invest at all in the equity market. It's, it's all fixed income investments. Yeah. So, so what happened today really has no bearing on, on the fixed income world other than, so we, we watch interest rates and what the Fed is doing along the interest rate cycle. And that's, that affects the bond market more than, than what is happening with the coronavirus and the stock market.
Thank you.
Yeah. So with that, our, our plan is to match investments along with your construction schedule within, within the realm of investments. And that's where we're able to look out and build that construction schedule. And even with that, with the, the market rates dropping, we still project about a $6.5 million of interest earnings over the lifetime of this, of this issue.
And so kind of walking through then, all the sources and uses and our estimates for the next two issues as well. If you go to the far right column and compare net funds available for project costs, pre-election estimates at $326 million total with this issue and the future issues, we're estimating about $332 million. So that's about $6 million of, you know, really it's contingency that, you know, the expectation is not everything will come in at cost. And it gives you the ability to finance those things if, if costs do go up. And if you decide that that's not needed, we do have two more bond issues where you can issue less if that's what you want to do going forward. But you'll firm those numbers up, obviously, over the next three or four years. And I suspect there will be more demands on, on the dollars at $326 million. And given that you're hitting the tax impact that you talked to voters, you're meeting the legal, legal requirements, you're earning a lot more on investments is one of the major drivers for that additional funding. It's likely that you'll end up with that extra amount available for project expenses. The really small print, I apologize. It's all unnecessary information, but it's almost unreadable. It's so little. What that is, is your, your principal and interest payments on these bonds, all the future bonds and other capital levies. You've seen this picture before, so let's, let's look at the picture because it's easier to see and understand what the plan is. The dark orange bars are this bond issue. Again, as I mentioned, it goes all the way to the end now. The light blue bond issues are the board-approved facilities maintenance bonds. And the light orange are the next two bond issues of the voter-approved portion that has not been issued yet. And as I mentioned, because of the lower interest rates, we've built in some planned step downs in debt. That allow, that will allow you to continue to manage your, your capital plan in a way that potentially will give you access to additional resources if, if you need them, but also would allow tax levies to decline over time if, if you, if you don't need to tap into those resources. But it gives us a ton of flexibility in terms of planning, you know, the next 25 years of the district and helping you decide what the best way is to meet your capital needs and still be responsible, responsive to your voters. And, you know, regardless of what you do, we're at the point where, where you've got some opportunities, when you've got a great story to tell to your voters now that, now that this first big portion of the bonds have been issued. So if no questions about the capital plan, page six is just the detail of the current payments on, or the payments on this current bond issue, just so you have that as a separate sort of due diligence item, so you, you know what you're voting on when, when you approve the resolution, you know, so it's not just built into everything else. Page seven is that chart I told you about. And this is, as I mentioned, this is, this is a five-year chart, but really it's a 50, 50-year chart in the sense that this is the low point for interest rates historically. This is an index, not the rate for your bond, but it gives you a sense of the shape of where interest rates have been going. So this is a, this is actually a 20-year AAA bond, basically, that, that, that gets indexed here. So you can see just generally where interest rates have gone over time. And, you know, the summer when we were planning, we were, we were up in this area, and we were hoping that rates didn't go up. And so we built a little cushion going into the election. And obviously, the opposite happened. And that's really to your benefit, to your taxpayers' benefit. The last attachment is the rating report. And I don't want to dwell on every page of it. And I, I recommend if you have insomnia that you just pick this thing up and read it cover, including your footnotes tonight to go to sleep just fine. But there are a couple of things that we wanted, we wanted to point out on page three. They talk about, they kind of give an overview. And in the middle, the bullet points note that they're, that the double A minus rating reflects the fact that you will have elevated debt service carrying charges, which is basically mortgage payments or principal and interest payments on your bonds. They do note that your other kind of long-term obligations for pensions and post-deployment benefits are modest and not a real source of, of pressure. But obviously, issuing, and we showed them, showed them the whole plan. They weren't just looking at the debt picture in terms of this bond issuance, but the whole plan. We also showed them that the carrying charges actually decline over time. But the bonds aren't paid off quickly because you start, just like with the mortgage, you're starting with a lot of interest payments and not a lot of principal payments. And so they, they noted that in terms of downward pressure on the rating, and that, that played a role. They said that is offset with very strong, basically, factors in the, in the district, including your enrollment growth, the housing market, new home construction. It's not noted here, but also the just general job and tax capacity environment, very positive. You know, so as some of those calculations on debt are made as a percentage of tax base, for example, so as your tax base grows, those will get better and take some of that downward pressure, pressure off. The third bullet point was important to them, uneven budgetary performance reflecting high special, or reflecting special education costs. But they were pleased that the district had, had made an effort to meet its fund balance policy. So even though there were spend downs in, in the budget, they were explained. And the fact that the, the budget appears to be balanced going forward or a strategy to have a balanced budget and potentially build reserves was a positive for them. So that, that helped you in terms of mitigating some of that downward pressure on the rating. And they assigned, that double A minus comes with a stable outlook, which means that in the next two years, they don't project that there are enough pressures on the district, on some of those downward things that would result in further downgrade of the, of the district's rating. And so that's an important factor as well. But as you think about budgeting, you have, you know, a couple hundred million more of, of bonds to issue. So it will be important for, from this standpoint, to make sure you, you help maintain this rating and hopefully, over a couple of year period, put some upward pressure and build that rating back up. So there are things that are not in your control, like your economy and your tax base, but there are things that are in your control, like your, your budget and fund balance. And so it's important to, important to keep that, that in mind. And so they note in the upside scenario, which is what could raise the rating, that sustained growth in reserves and improvement in the economic metrics could help put upward pressure on, on the rating. But they note that it may take longer than two years. And so that's why they have the stable rating outlook, not a positive rating outlook. And then they, they do mention they could lower the rating if your reserves decline below what they consider strong as a percent of expenditures, or if you have budgets with the reserves that are below the fund balance requirement that you have agreed on. So those are important notes for you to consider going forward. I'm sorry if I went a little long, but I think we covered everything. If you have questions, I'm happy to, happy to answer them.
I actually read through the whole thing a couple times to make sure that I had it. But there was one part where they said that we weren't, we were doing, the, the board is being given the budget every six months instead of every quarter. Did, is that something we're going to go back to doing quarterly or?
So they have a management section that is actually typically not too difficult to implement, some of the recommendations or the things they look for in a very well-managed school district. And so some of those things are things we talked about on the rating call and afterward that could help. And I'll just find them quick and point everyone to the page where the management, it's called financial management policies and practices on the bottom of the fourth page of the rating report. So you're at standard, and there are a few things that you could implement that would take you to good, which would help from, from the outlook of standard reports. And I know you've, you've had conversations about them.
Yeah, specifically about the question you just asked them. That's the quarterly reports we're going to start doing.
When did we stop? Was it, because I don't remember getting a quarterly for the last.
Yeah, we did, it was more done within the, the finance committee. We reviewed more specific information. So we'll, we'll go back to that.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Spoy.
So how will this rating affect the next time we do the bond issuance? When we go for the next, whatever, 60, whatever?
So, so how many, what? I'm sorry.
How will the rating affect?
How is the, the rating going to affect?
Sorry. My phone is ringing in my ears, too. So, how many what?
So when we have to go back for the rest of, of the bond, how does this rating affect us when we go back for that again?
How would, I'm sorry.
How does the rate, how does the rating affect us moving forward in the issue?
Oh, well, so, okay, the, the rates for this issue are locked in. So that's the rate it'll have regardless of if your rating changes up or not.
But that covers the full, that doesn't cover the full 326. Yeah, I'm talking about from past 250.
So we would go through another ratings call the next time we issue bonds?
Right.
You know, bring that up for.
So we'll have, we'll have the same rating call the next time you issue debt. And, and those rates would be affected potentially then by a change in the rating. So our, if you look at the, that detailed chart on this page, in the upper left is our planned issuance. And in 2021, so a year from now, basically, we're intending to issue 25 million of bonds. And then two years in 2022, 50 million. And so those will each carry a rating. If everything's sort of status quo, the stable outlook kind of implies that unless there's major changes, either upward or downward, probably be the same rating through that two-year horizon. So that's what we'll hope to maintain. And hopefully, we'll put a little pressure on them to upgrade the district, depending on how the financials turn out. But that's what would potentially affect the interest rate on those bonds. But these bonds and your existing debt are locked in at this point and won't change even if the rating changes.
But like the AAA, double A, double A negative, I mean, that works just like your personal credit rating, correct? So a double A negative is going to bring that percentage up. So we got 2.46 or whatever it is. Do we, do they have incremental?
Negative rating occurred before the, before the bond issuance. So we're, we're locked in at that for this 250 million that we just issued. That won't change. When we go back in 2021 for the 25 million, they're predicting that it probably won't change because it looks stable. But we'll do another issue, another bond rating at that point. So it could go slightly up or it could go slightly down, depending on how, how that, how that rating process goes.
So they released this rating about four days before these bonds were sold. So the market knew your rating when they made the bids on this bond issue. And so the same thing will happen each time you issue debt, as there'll be a revised rating.
But I don't see us changing a whole lot in two years. I mean, the debt is not going to go lower in two years, so.
No, that's what the report suggests, too.
Right. It's kind of like an iron horseshit. I always say it's like, they're really hard to turn. So the rating agencies don't typically, you know, once they've made a change, it takes a while for them to see consistent reports and typically audited reports. a while for them to see consistent reports, and typically audited reports. So in a year, we'll have one more audit, but really nothing more of audited results. And so they want to see a few years of that to change the rating typically. And so it was, it was a series of spend downs in the fund balance that created that part of whatever downward pressure there was. But as they noted, it was more the issuance of the debt that created most of the downward pressure. And now they know about all the debt. They know about the whole plan for the next 25 years, so that won't be a surprise for the next five bond issues. The thing that we can work on that potentially could help upgrade is to improve the fund balance and the financial position of the district. And we'll revisit that each time we issue bonds.
Thank you.
Mr. Janna?
I'm just curious, in terms of the bond, the rating downgrade, had that not occurred, do you have any idea what, I mean, if we had stayed at the rate that we were at, what kind of difference that meant to us in terms of cost?
No. You know, we used to say 5.05% was sometimes the difference between ratings, but that's usually when you don't have a credit enhanced rating. So you've got that AAA credit enhanced rating that sort of buffers that anyway, because that's basically free insurance. And bond market knows you're going to pay your bonds, whether you're, you know, single A or double A or triple A, because the state's going to pay it if you fail to. So that AAA state rating is really important and mitigates that. The other thing is in the market right now, it's so up and down that it's not clear what is changing things from day to day on an interest rate basis, you know, comparing ratings versus the latest stock market news or the latest coronavirus news. If we were in a very stable market, we might be able to compare sales a little bit better. It's just difficult to do that right now, but.
But I would say anecdotally, from an investor's standpoint, as we're going out in the marketplace and buying municipal bonds for clients, that a AA or AA minus has not, does not have a lot of bearing, because there's such a limited supply that investors are trying to scoop up municipal bonds as fast as they can. There's not even, they can't even keep up. There's not enough supply. There's so much demand right now to find a safe place to put money, that viewing that AAA rating from the state, these are some of the highest quality municipal bonds out there in the country from the investor's standpoint because of that Minnesota state AAA rating. So investors are scooping these up left and right. So from my perspective, it would not have a huge significant impact.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, concerns? Okay. Mr. Walter, are we ready to?
Yeah. I'm friendly, but the recommendation is to approve the.
Resolution. To ratify the resolution, to award the sale, the ward of the sale, to determining the form and the details authorizing and execute delivery and registration provided for the payment of general obligation school building bonds, Series 2020A as presented, correct? That, so I know that the resolution is there in the packet. Is there a motion to do so?
Sold.
There's been a motion by Ms. Ellison. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. Is there any other further discussion regarding the resolution or the motion? Hearing it's seen and done. This will require a roll call.
Arcan?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Good. Motion passes. So I, at this time, will ask for a motion to adjourn out of the special meeting, and then we will take just a five-minute break, because I know there's a ton of paperwork that we need to get signed before we get moving. So, yes, sir?
Can I just say one more thing?
Of course.
No, I've talked a lot. I do just want to say thank you and congratulations. I haven't got a chance to say congratulations. This was an exciting project for us to be involved in. All those colored bars represent a lot of work that was fun for us, and we focus on the colored bars, but I know you're focused on your community and building your community in a way that will last for generations. And to play a small part in that is very, very exciting for us. So I just want to say thank you for choosing to work with us, and thank you for allowing us to be your partner on this.
And I'll just say, on behalf of the whole entire board, we want to thank you for your guys' work to help us grow our community. So thank you very much for what you do for all schools and municipalities across the state. Thanks.
Mr. Chairperson, I'm going to adjourn the special meeting.
We've got a motion. I'll second it. And all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.